I'd like to reconvene the meeting for the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, November 6, 2019. We will begin with the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I start with a motion for approval of the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We will begin with board reports.
So, Sammerr's Association of Student Councils, or SMAS, had their first general assembly at Leonardtown High School. So, this is where student delegations from all middle school and high schools are invited to get together, to get to know each other, and learn about what SMAS is, what they're doing. And then, over the course of the day, we had different workshops, and each had a different theme. So, one of them was about leadership, and then we had one about diversity and teamwork. And then, this past Saturday, I went to the Light the Night Walk in Baltimore. So, each year, the Leukemia and Lymphoma Society holds local walks to raise awareness for blood cancers. And the one for Maryland is held in Baltimore. So, teams get together, and they raise money, and they have different activities for kids, and then they talk about their new initiatives that they have for LLS. And then, at the end of the night, they have a one-mile walk with different colored lanterns, and each lantern represents something different. The yellow one represents in memory of someone who has passed of blood cancers. And then, the white one is if you're a survivor, and the red lantern is in support. And their whole goal is to bring light to the darkness of cancer.
So, yesterday, I went to the Envirothon training. This is held by the Soil Conservation here in St. Mary's County. Thank you to Bruce Young and Haley for putting this together for the students. It is a great program. It is free of charge to the school system, to the students. They do fundraisers throughout the year to be able to ride a bus, to provide lunch, and to provide all the activities that they're doing. So, the Envirothon has been going on, I think it started really in 1979 in Pennsylvania, and moved here in the eighties. And Bruce Young really got it going. He said, I think it was in 93 or 94. So, what it is, is there's different stations that the students move around to. So, they have forestry, aquatics, wildlife. There's a oast soil. And then, also, a fifth, which is the unknown. And this year, it will be water conservation. So, there's experts in the field that are out there from forestry, you know, people that do this for a living, people that go out and test the soil for a living, or survey for a living. So, he's gathered all these people together to help teach the students. And even if they decide not to compete, they come as teams. Even if they decide not to compete, they're exposed to so many different opportunities out there as a career, whether they want to go in natural resource as, you know, a conservation person, or, you know, go into surveying. It's just a fantastic program. I can't say enough about it. There were a lot of students here yesterday, definitely up from the past years, which was, I was really happy to see. They came from St. Mary's Reichen, all three of our high schools, along with our tech center.
I attended the STEM Festival about a week and a half ago with Mrs. Weaver. Always enjoy talking to the young students, and I'm really fascinated with the expertise that they have. Some of the exhibits was on water quality. They had a section on drones and how to operate drones. Another section, a gentleman was talking about electrical conductivity. And I was kind of interested in, they were talking about soils. And you don't think about in a building, we think about our foundations and so on. But everything sits on soil, and that's a real science, soil engineering. So, there was an exhibit on that. So, that was something I enjoyed.
So, at the MAPE Conference in October, I was selected to serve on the MAPE Board of Directors for the upcoming year. So, Saturday, we had our board retreat up at the University of Maryland, and just talked a lot about what the objectives are for the entire organization for the year. Also, I would just like to say thank you to all of the administrators, and coaches, and teachers at our three high schools. This past weekend wrapped up homecoming for both Great Mills and Chopticon. The amount of effort, and I know Leonard Townes was earlier, the amount of effort that is put into homecoming week, and the football games, and the dances by everyone within the school system is just phenomenal. And they make it a great experience for our children, and I thank everyone for that. With the consent of my daughter, I was invited to the Chopticon pep rally on Friday. And the class of 2022 raised money for Kiss a Cow. So, they actually, in the spirit of Cow Pie High, they did have a cow that was there. And Mrs. Penrod won. So, she did kiss the cow, as well did Mrs. Summers, since it is her final year. So, the cow didn't make it quite to the 50-yard line. He was a little frightened by the amount of activity in the football stands. But it all was very successful. So, just, it is a supreme effort by everyone in those high schools, all three of them, to make the high school experience fabulous for these kids. And it was great. I just can't thank everyone enough.
Good. Sound like you had a wonderful time.
Chopticon High School Brave House Production presented Metamorphosis. And that was a Greek mythology containing six vignettes. It was a wonderful play. The superintendent was there. And I want to thank the students, the cast, and the crew, the teachers, the parents, the sponsors, the patrons, and community volunteers that helped to make this production a wonderful production. It was just wonderful, a good opportunity to bring the whole family out to enjoy. And it was three nights of performances. So, thank you very much.
I have been doing a great deal of reading in preparation for the upcoming legislative session. There are a number of issues that will come before the MAPE Legislative Committee on which I serve. And I want to make sure that I am prepared and that I'm ready to provide feedback to the group, especially when it comes to smaller rural counties. I think that's an important voice that sometimes gets lost if we don't make a big point of speaking up with knowledge, and especially with the changes in leadership at the state level in both the Senate and the General Assembly. Yeah, sorry. House. That, I think it's a huge change for the state, and it remains to be seen the impact it will have, especially on smaller rural counties.
We'll be doing a lot of that work together. I look forward to that as the legislative chair of PIZAM. Really did enjoy the play at Chopticon High School, Metamorphosis. That really was, it was incredible, the set design, and the costuming, and the level of participation of kids. Like, there are so many kids that were involved in that play. That's really quite wonderful. We have Leonard Townes coming up in two weeks. I think they're doing Twelfth Night, Twelfth Night. And then, Great Mills is doing Harvey.
Harvey next week.
They're doing Harvey, is that next week? Okay, so Harvey's next week. So, there are still great opportunities to have, get your theater on in our schools. I went to, I was away last week to the Maryland Negotiating Services Conference up in Ocean City, and it is an opportunity, it's called the PIZAM Retreat. So, we have two days to go in the meetings where we meet with a whole range of individuals, including Dr. Salmon and supporting staff, to talk about what's going on with all things MSDE. And there are many, many things afoot. But they do have the, the time is broken up. They have, they name the superintendent, the state superintendent of the year for this year, for 2020. And for this year, it is our own neighbor, Dr. Daniel Curry. So, he met with warm regards and brought all of his attendant people up from Calvert to go for the weekend. I do think we need to recap fall sports. Let's see, Leonardtown High School is still in the hunt for boys soccer. Boys soccer is the, they have, they have, what? The playoff is this Saturday up at Gaithersburg High School at 2:30. And if they, sorry, pardon me, when they, when they win that game, they will then go to the state championship. They are also the SMAC champions for boys and girls. All three of the schools have athletes competing in cross-country that will be, I think, also this weekend up at Gaithersburg High School. If you are looking for something really fun to do, we also have all of our all-county chorus concerts, and orchestra, and band coming up in the following weeks. Tonight is one of my all-time favorites. It's the all-county middle school and high school chorus concert. We attend them regularly. They're really quite wonderful. I have the opportunity to bring greetings tonight. It's going to be great. And we also have our new teacher seminar tonight where we're having a chili cook-off, where we've had all of our staff, anybody who has a fantastic chili recipe, they're bringing it out. And so, we'll have, so we have the, we have the board meeting today, several meetings, and I get to go and eat chili, and then roll across the parking lot to bring greetings at the high school, middle school orchestra, chorus concert. We'll see how that all goes. That should be a great deal of fun. Next week, we have the State of the Schools hosted by the Chamber of Commerce. That's going to be on Wednesday, November 13, at the James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center from 11:30 until 1:30. This year's presentation is all going to be focused on ROI, return on investment. If you remember, last year, we were talking about the fact that education is not an expense, it is an investment. So, it only follows that when we're talking about the State of the Schools, we should be talking about what kind of a return this county is getting on its investment in children and those who work with children. It'll be followed by a town hall meeting that same evening where we'll be kind of recapping what we talked about in the afternoon if you weren't able to make it to the State of the School luncheon. So, we've got a lot of stuff coming up, a lot of really good stuff coming up. If you have an opportunity, and so inclination, please go to our website. We have an event calendar that lists all of the things that are going on. And even if you don't have a child in the St. Mary's County public school system, come out to one of these events. You'd just be amazed by the talent of our kids, and again, the dedication to the people who work with them. And on behalf of Dr. Montgomery and myself, we are really happy that all the homecomings are done. It's a lovely week, where it's so much fun, but it is the razor's edge of controlled chaos as all kids participate in things and have that great amount of fun. And to culminate with Kim kissing a cow.
And the cow didn't get away. I mean, he was bucking it. He did not, they had him, he was.
They had him wrangled.
They had him wrangled. He was good. And she was also the homecoming queen, by the way, just in case you wanted. With her own special proclamation from the senior class, yes.
Lovely.
It was a nice send-off for her.
Yeah.
So.
That's all I have.
Okay, all right. So, now, Dr. Moore. With American Education Week, first of our two recognitions this morning.
Well, good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
It is my honor and privilege to be here this morning to share our appreciation for those who work with our students every day. For nearly 100 years across the nation, schools have celebrated American Education Week. The first of these recognitions was in 1921, led by the efforts of the NEA, the National Education Association, and the American Legion as a way to emphasize the importance of education following World War I. Today, we emphasize that same purpose, while also showing our appreciation for those who serve in our classrooms and our schools every day. November 18 through 22, 2019, has been designated as American Education Week. How appropriate that during that same week, we also celebrate Education Support Professionals Day, recognizing credible collective efforts of all of our staff. The theme for this year's American Education Week is Reach, Educate, Inspire. Now, think of these three important verbs. How do we reach each student? That begins with the relationships they form in their classrooms, the hallways, or the cafeteria. It is how we help students connect. How do we educate? We plan for thoughtful instruction and for interactive support, and we thoughtfully consider the best ways to help each child achieve. How do we inspire? Inspiration comes from when we help students to connect their passion with the tools to meet those challenges in front of them. In advance of American Education Week, we want to take the time to recognize the important work of our educators and education support personnel who make our students feel connected to their dreams, to be inspired. Across our system, amazing professionals work tirelessly for our students as they strive to reach their goals and aspirations. And we are grateful for our amazing staff in our schools, our offices, and across the system. I'd like to invite representatives of our staff to join me here at the podium to join in this recognition. Ms. Jill Morris, president of the Education Association of St. Mary's County; Dr. Alex Jafford, president of the St. Mary's Association of Supervisors and Administrators; and our principal of the year for 2019, Mr. Mike Egan, principal of the Dr. James A. Forrest Career and Technology Center. And Dr. Smith, would you please join us as well to share the proclamation?
All right. Readers. Whereas the week of November 18 through the 22, 2019, has been designated as American Education Week by the National Education Association in an effort to celebrate public education and honor the individuals who make a difference and ensure that every child receives a quality education. And whereas, education is a pillar of democracy and a cornerstone of American opportunity that gives our children the foundation they need to understand and appreciate our nation's values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas, public schools bring together adults and children, teachers and volunteers, businesses, civic leaders, and elected officials, all who have a stake in public education and play an important role in inspiring children to learn inside and outside the classroom. And whereas, public schools provide our children with outstanding opportunities in academics, athletics, fine arts, vocational training, and extracurricular activities to equip them with the skills and knowledge needed to grow, thrive, and succeed in our global society. And whereas, all education employees, including teachers, principals, assistant principals, administrators, counselors, par educators, custodians, cafeteria workers, office personnel, school psychologists, and other support personnel deserve our gratitude, respect, and support for their professionalism and commitment to our schools. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes November 18 through the 22, 2019, as American Education Week, and November 20, 2019, as Education Support Professionals Day in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and encourages all citizens to join people across the United States in showing support for public education and expressing appreciation to school personnel and celebrating the education that our children receive from public schools. Signed this day, November 6, by the Board of Education. It is very fitting that we call out a week for people to step up and really speak of the great appreciation they should have for public schools. In St. Mary's County, we appreciate people every single day. We recognize people every single day. We recognize that education without inspiration is going to be the downfall. We need to inspire ourselves, inspire one another, and inspire our children to achieve incredible things. And as is so fitting a day, I would ask my friends, who represent other friends, if they might wish to say a word or two. Yours has to be quick, though, because I definitely want to hear from, okay, all right.
Good morning. How you guys doing? Quickly, I think we all make decisions for students, not adults. And I think that's most important. I think I do represent the admin side, and we certainly bring our best every day to do what's best for students. So, again, thank you for the honor. Again, I accept this on behalf of all of our admin in the county. Thank you very much.
And you.
All righty.
As-mic brought a gift.
I did. I did. Good morning. American Education Week, blah, blah, blah. We do it every year, right? But this year, I'm wearing my red forehead, all right? Educators all over the United States are raising their voices. What are they raising their voices about, Ms. Bailey? Something we don't have here in St. Mary's County, underfunding. Educators in Chicago, how about that? I've come from Illinois, so I followed the strike. I was riveted to it, 11 days. What did they get? Sitting right here, psychologists, social workers, counselors. They held out for the wraparound services that our school is committed to. So, I come here today with a heart full of gratitude and appreciation. And I do have a little gift for you. All our educators this year are going to get, and I haven't done this because I am a very tight wad president. Ms. McCork, can I get an amen? Where's Ms. McCork? Is she in there? Where is she? Can I get an amen? I am tight.
Amen on the hall.
Okay, all right, good. So, but this year, all our educators in metro are going to receive a fabulous lanyard that has the esmic on it. It has a little badge thing, so you can think. And it's safe because every special educator knows you need a what kind of lanyard? A pull-away lanyard in case a kid grabs it. Dr. Moore, would you help me?
Oh, absolutely.
I have one for everybody up here and the cabinet, so.
Lovely.
Please wear, I want these to show in the picture. So, here it is in St. Mary's County, as Dr. Moore is passing those out. I just really want, and make sure Ms. Mancini gets one, and our ESP who work in the sound booth get one. I brought one for everybody. So, it's a lot about partnership here in St. Mary's County. I am so proud of all the programs we've pushed forward together as a strong union and a strong school system. Let me just tell you, I've already been out to more than half the schools this year. What am I hearing? Thank you. Thank you for a board of ed that listens and a cabinet who wants to partner and make things better. Thank you for a step in a 2% cola. I mean, who doesn't love that? So, we're hearing a lot of great things. There's a lot of great energy. But it is very inspiring to see educators all over raising their voices and coming together to get problems solved around underfunding and services for our fabulous students, which is what it's all about. So, happy American Education Week. I mean, there's a lot to be happy about, right, Dr. Smith?
Absolutely.
All right. So, thank you very much, and enjoy your lanyard. All right.
Thank you. Do you want to do? Okay, well, you're going to have to hold on to these, and then you're going to have to stay until we go to break, and then we're going to take a picture, okay? We've got to recognize.
I can follow directions.
Okay, all right. Will you go sit down?
Sorry.
Yeah, sorry.
Wow. I have no bag of gifts, but I will be talking about some wonderful gifts in our school system. So, good morning. It's my privilege to be here with Ms. Kate Egger, supervisor of Student Services, to share and expressing our appreciation for our school psychologists. St. Mary's County Public Schools joins with the state of Maryland in recognizing our school psychologists during School Psychology Awareness Week, November 11 through the 15 of 2019. Our school psychologists are uniquely qualified members of school teams that apply their expertise in mental health, learning, and behavior to help children and youth succeed academically, socially, behaviorally, and emotionally. They counsel students, meet with parents, collaborate with teachers, families, and school teams, conduct assessments, and support academic and behavioral interventions. Following along with this year's theme for school psychologists of find your focus, their interactions with students, families, and school teams allow them to do just that. They help students set goals and communicate needs. And as members of school teams, they support efforts to improve climate. At this time, we would like to recognize three school psychologists who have joined our team this year. If you can join us now. We have Ms. Amanda Gibson, who joins the Leonardtown Elementary Team, encouraging teachers to hand out positive acknowledgement, high-flyer tickets to students who exemplify positive behaviors aligned with PBIS expectations and support school climate efforts at Dinerd Elementary as well. Ms. Caroline Brungar, who was with us last year as our school psych intern, joins us full-time this year at Evergreen Elementary School and at Chesapeake Public Charter School, where she helps middle school students find their focus as she facilitates groups for improving executive functioning skills. And Mr. Malcolm Fulton can be found supporting conscious discipline efforts at George Washington Carver Elementary, as well as helping our high school students find their focus at Great Mills High School. I would also like to recognize in our audience this morning, Ms. Chris Grace and Ms. Ashley Biesel. You're welcome to join us as well, if you would like. And in recognition of all our school psychologists and the important work they do, we invite Dr. Smith to join us for the resolution.
Whereas the week of November 11 through the 15, 2019, has been designated as National School Psychology Week in school systems across the nation. And whereas, all children have a natural desire to learn, and it is vital that society invest in education to adequately support the needs of our children and youth. And whereas, our education system must ensure a safe, healthy learning environment for all children and be able to recognize and respond to their emotional and psychological needs, including those caused by personal or societal crises. And whereas, school psychologists are specially trained to help parents and educators identify and reduce risk factors, create effective, caring schools, access helpful community resources, and implement research-driven prevention and intervention strategies to foster healthy child development and academic success. And whereas, the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes the important role that school psychologists play in the personal and academic development of our children. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education of St. Mary's County recognizes November 11 through the 15, 2019, as School Psychology Week in St. Mary's County Public Schools, and that all staff and students are encouraged to recognize the event and participate in its observance. Signed this day, November 6. Congratulations. And so, who gets to hold it? Thank you very much for joining us. Thank you for being here today. Thank you very much for joining us. Thank you for being here today. Thank you very much for joining us and being here today. I just want to emphasize with the people new to the county, our average length of service is 14 years. So, I hope you're getting comfortable, because I expect you to be here for at least 14 years, okay? The need won't go away, and we're going to be here, so please buckle in. It's wonderful, it's wonderful that you have been joining us. I think, again, it's a testament to the board that every single year, you recognize that we need to make this investment in our children and in the people who are going to be working with our children. And I'm just, as difficult as it is to find incredibly highly qualified candidates for positions such as this, these, I'm just astonished that we've got wonderful caliber people such as yourself to come and join us. So, just thank you very much. Thank you very much. And we want to stop for a photo now. Would that be a good time? Will everybody be joining us in the photo? Board chair, could we break and take a photo of us?
Yes, can, can break.
Wonderful, thank you.
Consent agenda. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
On today's consent agenda, we have the approval of minutes of October 23, 2019, personnel, teachers, and personnel 2019-01. And so, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do I have a second?
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion is carried. And now, we have Mr. Wyant, might have stepped out for a quick second, with the cops.
Yeah.
I think everybody was anticipating a longer break.
There were three minutes.
I think Dr. Moore popped out to find him, I believe.
This is the only action I have, so I don't want to go out of order.
We all knew you took a break.
We were like moving right along.
More efficient than you expected.
I see that. Good morning.
We have the pictures down pat now, so. Oh, Scott.
Oh, sorry.
See? We didn't need the extra time anyway.
So it turns out, we weren't ready for you. I hadn't moved back the podium yet.
Thank you.
I think you have to move it off to the side just.
No, it's fine, it's good. The camera's still good. We can still, we can see the camera, so I'm assuming the camera can see us.
That sounds good.
But Dr. Marr's gonna check.
I can, I can see the camera too, so.
Maybe we should put little X's on the floor.
We're working, we're working, we're working on putting a, getting a screen there.
Okay.
Alright.
Ready to go?
We are ready.
Okay, so good morning once again. Very pleased, once again, to bring good news. The St. Mary's County Public Schools is once again the recipient of yet another grand award to support school safety and security initiatives. This one is actually a federal grant, the Community Oriented Policing Cops Grant, the School Violence Prevention Program, SVPP. The Cops School Violence Prevention Program provides funding directly to states, units of local government, Indian tribes and public agencies to improve security of schools and on school grounds through evidence-based school safety programs. The SVPP funding is available to support the acquisition and installation of technology for expedited notification of local law enforcement during an emergency and school security deterrence measures providing a significant improvement in security. We were very fortunate to be notified of this grant. It fit right in our timeline with our strategic planning. And we were able to identify as a best practice the installation of the Raptor K-12 Visitor Management Entry Control and Protection System. It's a hardware and software application that we're gonna place in all of our school's security vestibules. There's a little video that, and it has an emergency management component as you also see. It also goes to one of our main goals that we communicated to the county commissioners over almost three years ago now about campus notification and alert systems. So there's a lot of components to this. This is a great enhancement to our current building access management system. Our system was built internally many, many years ago. It has served its purpose well. Our IT department did a wonderful job in developing that and maintaining it. But this is now, for the first time ever, we can actually afford to acquire a nationally recognized application. So with that, I'm going to attempt to play a little information video. Let's see how this works, so.
And just so everyone's clear, this is the grant award that was in the press release last week.
Correct.
From the, from the Senators Van Hollen, Carden and Representative Hoyer.
Yes, yes, the SVPP program, yes.
When it comes to protecting your students and staff, knowing exactly who is in your building at all times is an absolute necessity. And unfortunately, traditional paper and pencil sign-in sheets offer a false sense of protection and aren't a real solution for keeping our schools safe. Raptor Technology's Visitor Management is a state-of-the-art system that instantly screens for sex offenders, custody issues and banned visitors. And you always know who is in the building, why they're there, where they're going and who they are there to visit. With Raptor, you can access an emergency panic button and silent alarm on every screen and maintain accurate records of all visitors, volunteers and contractors that can be accessed school or district-wide, protecting your students from over 750,000 registered sex offenders in the US. In fact, every single school day, Raptor issues an average of 75 sex offender alerts and 150 custom alerts, most often custody issues, in our clients' schools. That's a level of protection your district can't afford to be without. Find out why Raptor is trusted to protect more schools than all other visitor management systems combined. Visit us online at raptortech.com to learn more or schedule a free demo.
So, it truly is, you can see how it closes out. It is the gold standard in visitor access management control now. Back to the main screen here, I'm sorry. There we have. So the grant award, the federal grant award is for $60,729. There is a match required for that. In addition to what it will do with visitor access management, you may have noticed in the video that our building access management system now, we've obviously enhanced it. It's a touchscreen and you go in and you type in your name, hit enter, and it actually goes out. And we've built over the years a sex offender registry database, a no trespass directive, a custody protective order database, and it searches sound alikes and we get notifications on those things. What it doesn't do is, it doesn't integrate and draw information in from our data systems. It's kind of an upload that we have to do all the time. Raptor is completely compatible with our e-school data. And our understanding is we're working in the implementation development process now. But think of every night at midnight, there's an upload into this software platform. A student's emergency notification contacts change, custody issues change, all of that. It's constantly evolving and developing and updating this information all the time. The other thing, the other huge enhancement is, is that we wind up with a couple pieces of extra hardware at the building access entry point. One is what they call the toaster. It is actually a bar scan, government ID reader. So you literally put the ID into this little box. It goes down and it uploads the information to populate the fields on the software about who you are registering, those kinds of things. So it develops into where we're going that we're requiring identification before you come into our building. It maintains that data and the next time someone comes in, all they have to do, there's a second reader there, it's a laser reader. You just flash the card in front of it, it's a barcode reader, it reads it, boom, it populates the information automatically and you're able to enter in where you're going and with the purpose for your visit, those kinds of things. So it really gives us a lot there. The other thing, if it goes out and there's a hit or a notification of concern, it now returns back on the security side, a screen. And on that screen, there's a photograph of the sex offender registry record, if you will, with a photograph of the individual, whether it be California, Washington State, Hawaii, whatever it may be, as well as a photograph of the individual that's attempting to register to come into our building. So now we can do real time, it enables the security staff to do real time checks as far as, is this person a problem? As opposed to calling us and saying, John Smith is at the front door at Lenertown High School. What's John Smith's date of birth? We go to the sex offender registry. Finally, there's a confirmation process now where now this will become real time with all that. So it is a significant enhancement. The second component of that is the installation of the Raptor Incident Response Software Application to support campus alerts. It includes smartphone technology. So not only going out to computers and laptops and all those things, all the smartphone technology, we're able to push out notification regarding an emergency response action, something that, something that's occurring on campus, those kinds of things in real time. To include our law enforcement partners and all our fire and EMS partners. First responder notification, ongoing communications, electronic accountability for students and staff during an emergency synchronized with the e-school data, as I have stated. And most importantly for us in this is the reunification and recovery tracking system in real time. And I'll try to play this little video and see if we can.
Raptor Technology's Emergency Management System combines proven practices and protocols with 21st century technology to help your district better prepare for, respond to and recover from an emergency. The Raptor Emergency Management System has three main components. Drill management, active incident management and parent-student reunification. With Raptor, districts can quickly create and publish a set of drill requirements to all schools. Once drill requirements are sent out, reminders for upcoming drills are sent to each school. Non-compliance alerts and monthly summaries go out at the district level. Drills can be initiated from faculty members' mobile phones or desktop and the data from these drills is immediately and automatically recorded in your district dashboard, giving you real-time drill compliance data by school. In the event of an actual emergency, alerts are sent out instantly to designated school and district personnel, as well as local law enforcement and any other first responders you choose. Through the app, staff members can access class rosters and account for both themselves and their students in real time, giving incident commanders real-time visibility into the incident. Police and first responders can instantly access building maps and staff can access emergency plans right from their mobile devices. After the incident, parent-student reunification will be four times faster with Raptor Emergency Management than with paper and pencil methods. And you'll be able to ensure you're releasing students to authorized guardians and have a complete record of the current status and prior movement of every student from the moment of incident initiation through reunification. All approved guardians will receive a text message confirming that their student has been re unified. So there's never any confusion among guardians of who retrieved the student and when. The Raptor app is 100% aligned with the standard response protocol and the standard reunification method and can be configured to any protocol you use. Raptor's implementation and support teams will walk you step by step through the entire emergency response process and ensure you and your staff feel confident. Visit us online at raptortech.com to schedule a demo.
So this was the major and most significant component of this to both Dr. Smith and I when we saw the demonstrations by the vendor. And again, because what we learned from our previous experience is that, and I know this long as in the audience, and we can talk about our efforts with the last reunification process that we had and using a Google format for that and the challenges with it being constantly updated by staff and then having to kind of restart again because every time someone updated it, it reset. It did cause us some problems. This platform is tremendous. And what I have seen with this is literally the demonstration, if there is a lockdown in the building, so to speak, a staff member can use their smartphone or their classroom laptop or computer. They can bring up the class roster, who's supposed to be in my class at this time. It lists a list of the children and they go down, boom, 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 accounted for, hit enter, and we are able to see that in real time. That is, for the logistics of negotiating accountability and managing an emergency and getting to reunification is so, so important. And then you can see, you saw what happens once we arrive at the reunification center. And better off, even communication to the emergency contacts that your student is here, your student has been re unified. So this is something I'm really excited about. It is going to actually be a slow build-out. I mean, you can imagine where we're at with this. We are planning to beta-test that, this system, in its entirety in early January. Hopefully have it in the high schools, at least the visitor access component, by spring break. And then over the summer, at least get it to all the secondary schools and then build out from there as quickly as we possibly can. It does require a $20,000 match. We have that and we've been working with Ms. McCourt and Fiscal Services and Chris Stewart. They've been tremendous in helping us get all these grants. So we're prepared to do the match, provided that you approve acceptance of the grand award today. And we are certainly prepared to move forward with that. So with that, I'll entertain questions, but we request that you approve the agenda item as presented.
So anyone can use the app for like different purposes, like parents, teachers?
Yep. It's very versatile, yes.
Since EMS is gonna be getting a new communication update, you know, to their system, is this something that's similar, that it's compatible, that it will?
It's, yes ma'am. I believe, what has been presented to us is this totally open architecture. We control the notification system. So we're able to say, provided you have a smartphone or some level of technology, these are the individuals that we want to receive these communications and build it out from there. And it's expandable. We can start with just law enforcement, but I think we're really looking at, and we communicate, as you know, all the time with EMS and Fire. I think this really gives us the ability, and again, not being negative about what we've had in the past, but the expansion of this and the build-out, the ability to build this out and not have to have someone internally managing this is just tremendous for us.
So it'll go right to their system then?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I don't know when their new system's gonna be implemented, but I, I know that they got approval for it recently.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be an open architecture kind of environment where we're gonna be able to do service, whatever their needs may be. You know, the floor plans, as you saw, regarding the notifications, those kinds of things, all those kinds of things. So a fire chief, let's say it's a fire, it doesn't have to be an active threat situation. It could be a fire evacuation. We're gonna be able to use that with the fire chief in the command post to say, all the students are present and accounted for, so, yes.
Right, thank you.
You're obviously trying to account for everybody that comes in the building in egress. And I'm wondering if a person that registers to come into the school, when he comes out, if he fails, or he or she fails to sign out, if you will, does that cause a problem?
It does. And that's another enhancement of this system. And also, what we've built at the security vestibules with one way in and out of the school, we're making sure, you know, our security staff, and hopefully we'll have security staff in all of our buildings one day, are going to make sure, hey, you need to sign out when you leave here. So, yes sir. But that's, that's always something that's there in every jurisdiction I've ever been, that's been one of the experiences. We know that there's gonna be a certain percentage that did not sign out and then, and that's where we do spend our time, quite frankly, is emergency responders spend their time, we've got to find this person. Yes.
Thank you.
So I have a quick question. So when you go and, let's say you sign out your child in the middle of the day for an appointment, can you mesh that paper list into the system when you have, when you have a response?
It's actually, it has a platform for that. So it's scalable. So it even has late arrival applications as well. So yes, the answer is yes.
So I won't have to sign a pink piece of paper anymore, signing my child in or out. It could all be done through this system.
And that's, and that's obviously part of what we're experiencing now is even with the touchscreen, whether you're using a keyboard or touchscreen, you have to type your name in every single time.
Right, and that's where your backup gets, in the vestibules.
Exactly.
And the really interesting part is that once, once you're, once it's been scanned once and is archived, then it really is, it is just flashing your ID in front of it and it automatically reads it. It's very, very, very.
Does this have to be a real ID or can?
Is it a driver's license?
It will use, it's compatible with all Maryland driver's licenses, all government driver's lic, all government issued IDs, even military IDs. We checked about military identification. We have had experiences because of the new systems at the high schools. I don't have my identification with me. Well, we're, obviously, we're trying to socialize it. That's now becoming a very important component. But the beauty of this system also is we're actually able to create, if someone says, I don't have any government ID, we can actually create an identification card. Once we vet them and say, okay, this is exactly who they are, we can issue a SMCPS kind of identification card that has the reader on it. So we're gonna be able to build this system out even for parents or guardians or visitors who don't have that. So I don't, I really don't want to get into a lot of that, but it does have that capability, so.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you very much. I remember the day when we didn't even have resource officers in the school and when you weren't here, and I'm glad that you are here. Your department works very hard to educate the students and community and staff in many different ways, in addition to providing this safety enhancement, which has taken us from the paper where you sign in to electronic. So it's good for everybody to know that you will need ID or you will create an ID for them if they don't have one. And it is, it is important that people sign in, that they sign out.
Right.
And they are really out of the building.
Yes.
So that's gonna be a key component as well, so. Thank you for this, for bringing it up to the 21st century and that we are doing everything we can at SMCPS to keep our students, staff and community safe while they're in the building. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
In the first video that you showed, it indicated that there would be like a panic button on each screen that popped up. If, if the person hits that panic button, where does that go?
It will go right to law enforcement. So as you build out the notification to law enforcement, now, I will say to you that I picked up on that as well and I asked the question. I'm not sure that I want a panic button on every visitor access management system. So the screen, the initial screen, when you come into the building and what you see from Raptor is customizable, totally customizable. So we are able to say, add it, take it down, those kinds of things. So we're still working on that to identify what is best practice there. Because I think ultimately, we, we want the school administration to have the control to be able to say, we're in panic mode, or our staff.
Right, and especially, I mean, if you have somebody come in that you know is not supposed to be that you know is not supposed to be in your building and you want to hit that, you also want some sort of capacity, I would think, to let the law enforcement know what the issue is.
Exactly.
At the same time, if it's something really bad, you just want somebody to really be able to click and unobtrusively.
And be done with it.
And be done with it.
And know that help is on the way.
Right.
Yes.
But then, you're going to, are you going to have two screens? Because like your screen to sign in is beyond what the door is to get into the office. So you'd have to have a screen to sign in, and then you'd have to have the screen of your security officer to check whatever you're scanning.
Right.
Because like, right now, at Chopticon, I think there's just the one screen.
Correct.
So I check in, I'm on there, the security guard's outside with me. So there would, you know, you need a second, you need a second terminal in order to check whatever I'm scanning in as a, as an ID.
Right, exactly. So I think it's going to be, you know, as you say, a slow build-out and figuring out what is the best practice. It's just, I was, you know, if it was going to go to, say, a secretary, is that person always going to be at their desk seeing, ah, you know, this popped up, I need to do something about it? And my thought, you know, worst-case scenario, you know somebody's getting in, has gotten into the building, and you need them out of there quickly. You, you don't want to be sitting there typing a bunch of stuff. You want to just be able to touch something.
Exactly.
You know, and be as calm, cool, as collected as you can.
And we have had a few occasions this year where our security vestibule, our containment area, is, has worked just like that. We're containing the problem in that one little area that where they're not in the building. And so by design, remember, that's what we're doing, is we're actually creating that. And those two screens are going to be very instrumental. Whether it goes back to a secretary or a uniformed security officer, they're going to be able to manage whatever's going on there. And that was the thought process, that I didn't necessarily want someone who wasn't being allowed in the building to hit the panic button and call for law enforcement assistance to get into the building. We're going to take care of that on our own, as far as that goes.
And my other question is, you indicated that it was compatible with e-school and it would upload information. How comfortable are you with their privacy practices? That they'll be having sensitive school, sensitive student information?
Right, ask the question for sure. I was, we were on top of that from the very beginning. You saw through the map, they are in several states, all over the country right now. And they are using the main platform for e-school and several other communities. They haven't had any issues with it at all. And again, we control all of that as far as what access, what we want uploaded, what we don't want uploaded. You know, I do like the feature of the classroom schedules. So if you would, it's sort of like what I consider the demographic data on the front page of a student's information, student's name, date of birth, the contacts, and their class schedule. And that's kind of where I think we're going to go with far as upload. We're not going to get in, obviously, there's no discipline data or anything like that uploaded into the system.
Okay, thank you, those are my questions.
Yes, me.
Well, I guess it'll be really helpful too, at one lunch, to track students, because at that point, they could be anywhere in the building. I mean, they're not, they're not in an assigned classroom or a location anywhere.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
May I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the Community Oriented Policing Cops School Violence Prevention Program, SVPP, grant budget, and the submission of the grant budget to the Commissioners of St. Mary's County for their approval. Further, that the Board approve the purchase of a licensing agreement with Raptor Technologies for visitor and emergency management software at a cost of $69,472.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. McCray?
Healthcare.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So I have Trish Lehman here from CareFirst Sheet as our accounting executive, as well as Leslie Van Selle, who handles the coordination of benefits for our employees and retirees. We wanted to provide a review of our employee-retiree healthcare plan because our CareFirst plan is different than your average homeowner's insurance plan or your car insurance plan. With those plans, you pay out your premium and you receive your insurance, if necessary during the course of the year. With our CareFirst plan, it is a self-insured plan. And under that, CareFirst acts as our administrator of the claims. It is a modified retrospective billing arrangement. And what that means is that their underwriters assess what the premiums need to be based on historical trends as well as market trends. So we get billed a premium, and then at the end of the year, there's a settlement which results in what the premiums paid out by St. Mary's County Public Schools are, minus the actual claims and the CareFirst administrative costs. And that equals our delta, our plus or minus settlement amount, which is usually estimated in August and then finalized in October, early November. If we have lower costs than what the underwriters had anticipated, then that results in a positive settlement, our money's back to us. However, if the costs or the claims are higher than the underwriter had anticipated, then that results in a negative settlement or amount owed by St. Mary's County Public Schools.
Ask a question?
Yes.
On that backside, the premium amount is also when, when the underwriters take into account what the premium amount is that our employees pay for. Does that also encompass our self-insured history of the employees that are participating in the plan?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Which is why the wellness plan is so beneficial.
Yes.
Yes, and we'll get to that as well.
And just loop that all in right off.
Excellent point.
So there's always been a conversation about our fund balance. The total fund balance being, from our last presentation at your last meeting, $12.8 million. However, that undesigned amount is $4 million, of which has been appropriated by you now and is waiting for the budget adjustment with the county commissioners. Within our assigned fund balance, we include $4 million for healthcare. And that is, in the case of a negative settlement year and a time that we owe CareFirst back monies because our claims exceeded our premiums, we do have a 5% maximal callable margin. And that's where that $4 million would come into play. Our FY '19 premiums that we were billed were $42 million. That's total premiums for the employee and employer contribution. So the $4 million represents two years' worth of reserve held in fund balance to take care of a particular call year. So we've made a lot of adjustments over the past five years, probably even a little bit before then, because CareFirst came to the table and said, we recognize that there is a need and there's a better opportunity here to manage our costs. Additionally, our legislative auditors back in 2014 recommended that we put out an RFP. We did so. We only did it at that time for pharmaceuticals, because it's a big job to put in an RFP for your healthcare costs. And in 2015, the county government was not interested in pursuing that RFP process with us. CareFirst was the awarded vendor at the time. And then in 2018, the county government, under their new Director of HR, Catherine Praxton, reached out to us and said, we're interested in putting out an RFP for all healthcare costs, medical, pharmaceutical, dental, and vision. Are you interested in pursuing that with us? And we absolutely did. And once again, CareFirst was the awarded vendor. We utilized an outside consulting forum, Bolton Partners, as well as having a panel, both on the county government side and St. Mary's County Public School sites, to evaluate the plan options independent of evaluating the cost. And then additionally, in the past four years, we had negotiated changes with ESMIC and SMASAP. We had removed the PPN plan, which, as you're aware, is the more costly of the plans. We added deductible plans for our HMO and triple option. We had a change for the employer and employee contribution. We had incentives that were added for CVS and mail order. We added the Blue Rewards and Wellness Grants, as well as adding an RX Formulary II. And the Formulary II is what generates that rebate that we talked about at our last meeting. So as a result of implementing the Formulary II, we went from under $900,000 in rebates recognized in '15 to in excess of $3.5 million recognized in this past fiscal year.
Sure. What, one of the characteristics that the underwriter uses is looking at trends. We look at your specific trend, we also look at industry trends. And on, in the pharmacy world, as you are well aware, the trends have been extremely high. There are introduced specialty drugs. A lot of the chemotherapy drugs, which were all infusion drugs, are now by mouth drugs. And a lot of them are running like $10,000 a month for a member. So in the non-specialty brand inflation, we've been seeing a 3.2% increase. Specialty brand, 1.3. Generic inflation, .20. Obviously, your generics are your most cost-effective. And the utilization of .60. Pharmacy benefit management, drug mix and rebates, we look at the rebates in conjunction with the mix of drugs, which is a changing factor every year. And we've seen a negative 7.70. Overall, your gross trend with rebates has been minus 4%. And if you look at the industry, the trend is closer to 5.5%. So you all are performing very well based on marketplace trends. And that's what we want to continue to see.
In looking at the way to best manage these costs, we've spent a lot of time dedicating ourselves to employee and retiree education on the benefit of health insurance as a whole, and then specifically what offerings we have provided to employees through the negotiations with our bargaining units. And I'm really proud of where we've, where we've come. This graph illustrates our enrollment in the triple option plan, which replaced the PPN. And how it is contrasted with the HMO enrollment, which is our less expensive plan that still provides the same excellent benefits to employees. And to make this transition, we're spending a lot of time one-on-one with employees, talking about how they use their healthcare, who they're seeing for healthcare, what they're willing to pay for healthcare, and how they can and should evaluate all of those things and make the decision that's best for their family. And so, for the past four years, HR has visited every school site once a year and will sit out at the schools and talk about anything that the employees want to discuss. Often, it's retirement or tax, you know, how do I adjust my tax withholdings? What do I do about my teaching certificate? And we take every opportunity to discuss healthcare. I go to every school every year to speak to folks about what they can do. Often, they want to know, how can I make more money? Well, you know, there's, there's something that you can do for that if you're a teacher and you continue your education, but let's look at what your deductions are too and see if you're, look, if you've got the benefits that are right for you. Because the difference between an HMO one deductible for families and the triple option, the most expensive, is $174 a pay. And so, are you using those benefits? Do you truly need those benefits? In addition to visiting every school site during the school year, we conduct open enrollment meetings. Our fantastic account reps, Trisha and Donna, come from Annapolis, and we visit four locations. Each throughout open enrollment, to make sure that we're giving opportunities to folks in the area that they're in, in the evening and on Saturday, to talk about what their healthcare needs are. We do require a mandatory open enrollment every year. Everyone is pestered. We want to make sure that you re-enroll in the healthcare plan that's right for you. This gives us the opportunity to have these conversations that are really yielding some excellent results. And we meet with the retirees. We require mandatory open enrollment from our retirees as well. We'll go to the retiree breakfast that's held every April and talk to them about any plan changes that are negotiated because those impact our retirees. And also, answer questions about what plan may be best for them as they are approaching changes, whether through a move or approaching age 65 and need to get a supplement for Medicare, those types of things. And also, we've implemented a appointment scheduling system that is sent out with every email that comes from me or every email that is about health insurance, that gives the employees an opportunity to click on the blue button that's on the screen and book a personal appointment. Many times, folks don't want to talk about their own health situation in an open meeting setting, or even in HRDU where it's just two HR folks. They'd like to come in and talk to me about their child's need for occupational therapy. Or, you know, is this doctor covered? I have this health issue, what else could I do? And in this past open enrollment season, I met with 240 employees, one-on-one, before or after their duty day, because we want to ensure that we are promoting responsible use of time, to discuss what their needs are. Often, they're able to save money and therefore save cost by reducing their expenses and joining a new plan. Sometimes that's not the case. Sometimes they need something that maybe isn't a covered benefit under the HMO. And so, my goal is not to steer them to the cheapest plan, but rather, what's best for you? If you have a college student in West Virginia, you might not need the HMO. You might need the triple option. That college student is not going to have access to routine and preventative care under the HMO in West Virginia. So you may need to switch to the more expensive plan. Or look at the student health plan that's available to your student because it's going to be less than the $300 a month premium increase that you would see as an employee. So that's, that's our goal, is to ensure that we are offering our employees the opportunity to make the best selection for them on an annual basis.
And can I make a comment? I want to assure you that the efforts that have been put out on behalf of the employees have been incredible. We use St. Mary's County Public Schools. I personally use them as a reference a lot of times on how things should be done. It's amazing to me. I manage and have managed five Board of Eds for a number of years, along with governmental entities. And it is incredible, the work that's being done in this area. So I want to make sure that Leslie and Heather Huff, who also works with Leslie, get tremendous acknowledgement, because the time and effort that it goes, that goes into individual, one-on-one meetings with these employees, not only is incredibly beneficial for the employee, but it's helping you all in staying under trend. The Blue Rewards program that they put in has really incentivized people to take some responsibility for their health, to get their annual physicals, to get their annual immunizations, and stay on top of things. We come into play, because people will say, and as Tammy said, we administer the plan. So what do we bring to the table? Well, the first thing we bring are tremendous discounts. The average discount being realized, and it's, it fluctuates because of the claims coming in. But you, you're running at close to 60% as a discount off of billed charges. And that's because of the discounts that we have in place with the providers in the area. But one of the things that Leslie and Heather's efforts do is to encourage people to use the in-network providers. And right now, you have about 96% of your employees are using the most deeply discounted network, which is our Blue Choice Network. And nobody's complaining that there aren't any doctors. There is always doctors that can be seen. In addition, 99% of the claims are being reimbursed in our most deeply discounted network. So I can't speak highly enough about the efforts that you all have engaged in. One of the areas that we find One of the areas that we find that's, um, pretty important is, um, when we look at, um, the average cost of like ER visits and, um, urgent care visits, because there's a lot of venues today to get your healthcare. Um, it used to be that everybody just took off to the emergency room. Well, now you wait in an emergency room, so it's not the best use of your time. But in addition, um, it's the most costly setting. So the average for Saint Mary's County Public Schools, and we do break this down on an account-specific area, is nine hundred and fourteen dollars and thirty-three cents for, um, that's eleven cents, for the, um, ER visit. The urgent care, which is like your CVS Minute Clinic, or like a patient first, or one of the, um, you know, just freestanding urgent cares, which pretty much are all in our networks, is a hundred and twenty-three thirty-eight. So you'll see, or a hundred and twenty-one thirty-eight, so you'll see that it is, um, much more cost-effective to drive them to the site that's most cost-effective. And they're getting as good, if not better, service. And then, we introduced a couple of years ago, video visit, which is a way that people can use their iPad, their smartphone. Um, they can pre-register through our CareFirst site, um, so that their ID information and their membership number is all registered. And they can actually go on, they'll put their location, and docs will show up that are in, that are available for, um, video conference, uh, visits. And Saint Mary's County Public Schools, through all the work of the, uh, HR team, you all are the largest utilizers of, um, of the video visit, uh, in all of our, our book. Uh, and in municipalities, we manage forty-six municipalities. So you all have the, have the award for the, the greatest use. And you can see that that's a forty-nine dollar cost for care. And people love it, it's, uh, the teachers use it because they can go into the teacher's lounge and get on the, with the doctor and get a prescription prescribed, and it's, um, it's very effective. So I can't speak hu- highly enough for the utilization efforts that the school system has done. I'm very, very proud of what they've done. And I think, and I have managed this account since probably the nineteen eighties. I've been around a long time, so I've seen a lot of, uh, different utilizations. But, uh, your premium increase, um...
I want to point out one quick thing on this slide because the numbers are really small. For the ER visits, we had one thousand five hundred and seventy-seven visits last year at a cost of nine hundred and fourteen dollars on average for a total cost of one point four million dollars. The urgent care visits exceeded that number by almost a thousand at two thousand three hundred and twenty-one dollars, but for a total cost of two hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars. So that's substantial, and that's a hundred percent based on the education that's being provided to our employees. We absolutely want them to receive the services that they need, but we're educating them on how to do it cost-effectively, to not only them, but the plan as a whole.
Can I ask something on that?
Oh, absolutely.
Sure. Okay, so, do you find that the visits to the ER are truly ER visits now versus as in the past? Or, um, you know, because I think that's, that is fantai- fantastic that for the urgent cares...
Well, that has absolutely been a component of the education that's been provided.
Yeah.
Well, I think that, and I think that there's more urgent cares opened. I mean, especially in the middle part of the county, I mean, you guys are in like a wasteland down here because there was, you know, there, I mean, there was no place to go except to the hospital, unless you wanted to drive fifteen or twenty minutes either way, so...
It's a combination of both of those.
Okay.
Absolutely, and the other thing that I'd like to add about video visit is that CareFirst has actually enhanced the video visit platform since we spoke to you about it last time. And it includes now, uh, mental health visits and nutrition counseling and lactation counseling. And so, folks can, um, immediately access through the app on their phone or the interface on their computer, someone that can talk them through, um, uh, you know, whatever mental health challenges they're having, nutritional counseling, in addition to pink eye or sore throat. And so, um, we, we need that type of accessibility here, um, because, uh, we don't have enough mental health providers. And so, we are very grateful for this enhancement. And, um, I, I'm grateful that we are the, um, the poster children of CareFirst. Um, I've received a lot of calls from other school systems wanting to, Tricia has shared our good, um, use of the program, and they'd like to know what we do. And so, one of the things that we do is that, um, Colleen Gill invites us to new teacher orientation every year. And we get to tell them, hey, you haven't had the chance to pick up a doctor yet, but you've got this app. And then, um, we're allowed to socialize it again throughout the year, you know, it's, it's flu season. Don't forget, you don't necessarily have to go out and catch whatever else anyone has. If you've got pink eye, they can look at that. That sort of, um, immediate care has been very, very well responded to by our staff.
You also have to look at generationally, um, people who are coming on who are mu- much more comfortable using an app.
Right.
Um, and so, that's, uh, at, an absolute go-to for them. Um, with respect to the emergency room visits, most of our urgent cares close down at eight or nine o'clock in the evening. So even though we have more of them, I wonder if you took a look, as I'm sure Blue Cross Blue Shield has, um, what's the timing of those emergency visits? If it's one o'clock in the morning, um, that's probably their only option.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, um, i- if it's out, if it's within the hours of what I call dock in a box, um, you know, i- it's a lot faster to just run into dock in a box, um, especially with all that we have now.
Um, and you're, to look at your trend over the years, your FY premium increase, uh, FY nineteen was three point nine percent, and FY twenty premium increase is four point two, which is benchmarked up against industry trends of medical six percent and RX nine percent. So, again, doing extremely well. And I, I, again, have had the pleasure of, of working with, uh, Saint Mary's County Public Schools for many, many years. It is our privilege to be the vendor. And when we're put out to bid and we get re-selected, that's validation that we're doing something right. And we've got a new CEO, uh, as of a year ago. He's forty-one years old, he's dynamic. And not knowing what we have, uh, are, w- w- will be faced with, with elections and changes, et cetera, um, just know that we're watching everything and we're on top of the marketplace. And, uh, we'll keep you as informed as we can as we move forward. And again, thank you for the opportunity to work with you.
If, if we could just go back to the slide previous. So when you say that the twenty twenty market trend is medical six and RX is nine, is that an overall fifteen?
Um, no, it's because it's blended.
It's blended.
Yeah, it's blended because the, your medical expense, well, it used to be that hospital costs were the, the biggest part of the entire medical spend. Today, RX, prescriptions, is the largest contributor to, to the overall spend. But we do look at them differently because you do get rebates on the, on the prescription drugs, and you don't get rebates on your hospital stays.
No, you do not.
Be nice if we could work that out. But just know that we're, we have a provider relations area that is always on top of the continuation of providing the best discounts. And we get very little dropout of our, uh, networks. We have lower than one to two percent of dropout. So the consistency is really important to maintain for your employees too. Because they don't want to be in a plan where their docs are dropping out all the time and they got to make changes. So, and I, I think the other thing is that, you know, we're not adverse. If somebody needs to go to Johns Hopkins, that's great. They don't need to go to Johns Hopkins for a tonsillectomy, you know? It's, so we're trying to make sure that outpatient services are used to the best of our ability. And, and we, it's site of care. Site of care has become very, very important because now you have outpatient surgical centers that get people back in, uh, to home very quickly, uh, and are managed for the, uh, surgical experiences that they have, and they don't need to be inpatient. So there's a lot of things going on behind the scenes, as well as, you know, nurses working with providers in doctor's offices to try to make sure diabetics are keeping their A1C levels where they need to be. Because the truth of the matter is, if you keep your A1C level where it needs to be, you can avoid all of the side effects of diabetes, the blindness and the amputations, et cetera. So we're working the high-cost claims and we're working the chronic illnesses, um, as best we can, on your behalf.
Hugely important, yes.
Thank you very much.
I want to thank you because this is truly a group, uh, group effort. And first, I want to thank, um, Mrs. Fancella and Heather Huff for all that you do, going to the school sites and work sites and talking with our employees, whether they can meet you before school or after school, talking to our retirees. And, and you're making a tremendous difference. I want to thank the wellness committee at each school for all that they do. And thank you for all the education that you're doing so the employee can make a responsible decision, which will help us with our bottom line. Um, I want to thank you, Ms. Lehman.
Yes.
For what you've done, you've been working with us for many years. And how this is in this chart, it easier for everyone to understand the dollars and cents of it. And I like the HR to you, that is wonderful, um, what you're doing there. And also, um, the video visits, I think that's great. So in the privacy of your own home, you can talk to a mental health professional, or you can just talk to a MD or a nurse practitioner about whatever might be bothering you. And you don't even have to get in your car and go anywhere, and you can get the answer right there. So I congratulate everyone for what they're doing to, to make this more cost-effective and so we can, um, be more effective and efficient with the resources that we have, that the money in the end comes back to the employee.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I wanted to say, on behalf of the Blue Rewards program, which is really, you all are paying the, the incentives for the Blue Rewards, but the return on investment is very strong. Um, we've had, uh, just in this particular year, because of the requirements that they see their primary care or they get their biometric screening, uh, we had two employees identified that came forward to us. Um, and one was diabetic identified because they were going to get a reward, so they went and had their biometric screening done, and that's when it showed up. And another one, uh, there was a cancer diagnosis. Uh, hadn't had, um, you know, routine screening done in a long time. And a diagnosis was determined and they were able to get, get it taken care of with adequate care. So it kind of serves a dual pur- purpose, but it's getting people to take some responsibility and to do things. Uh, unfortunately, we find incentives are the things that work. Just telling them to go, it's good for you, doesn't work as well as if they have a prize at the end of the day. So I just wanted you to know that that investment is well worth it too.
Thank you. So education awareness and incentives are...
Yes, education awareness.
Thank you, Mrs. McCord, as well.
Any other questions?
I don't think so. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
All right, you have a whole group on dual enrollment.
Miss Hunt, Miss Park, Miss Wazakinsky.
Uh, it's down there, yep, I should be doing my, uh, top one. Slide show. Hmm? Slide show. Mm-hmm. Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So, um, we're here to talk about dual enrollment as well as advancement. Opportunities that, uh, we provide to our students so that their educational experience is truly tailored to what, uh, best meets their needs. Dual enrollment is a special admissions program for high school students. And, uh, it is really for those students who are able to meet the criteria, which is they need to be of junior level standing at least, and also have a two point five GPA and apply to CSM. It gives students the opportunity to earn college credit while they're satisfying high school graduation requirements. And requires the higher education institutions and the public school system to offset the cost. It is a benefit to, oops, did that not go? Yep, here we go. There we go. It's a benefit to our students because they're able to earn college credit while in high school, as we said. So it's a very efficient means in terms of their time and also cost to parents. Uh, it allows them to engage in college experience early and allows them to add college courses to their high school transcript if that course, uh, satisfies a high school graduation requirement. It's a benefit in that it can also be a means of providing courses to students that may not be offered in the program of studies. Uh, we find that with some of our students that are, um, exceptional in, uh, their academics and they perhaps need courses that are a little beyond what we're providing. Or simply students that want to enrich, they know they're going to go into education, so they'll take some of the early education courses at CSM. Um, it is a reduced cost, there's a fifty percent reduction, uh, cost to students. There's no cost for students who receive free and reduced-priced meals. And, uh, Saint Mary's County Public Schools reimburses five percent to the College of Southern, uh, Southern Maryland. And that's per the Senate Bill seven forty. In terms of dual enrollment, you'll see, we've been doing this for a number of years. But just to give you a snapshot of the last three, uh, years, um, in school year twenty seventeen, we had three hundred and fifty-eight students, uh, participate in the dual enrollment program. In school year twenty eighteen, you'll see a significant jump, we had five hundred and thirty-five students participating. And I would attribute that jump to the fact that we are offering more dual enrollment courses in our high school seats. So those students that might have had a challenge of transportation, that was removed and they're able to participate. We are also coming on board with a more variety of student, of courses, um, that we're offering, uh, at the high school. And also with the coming on board of, uh, CSM Access Program. Uh, in school year twenty nineteen, you saw a slight rise, now it's beginning to level off, uh, five hundred and forty-five students. Now, thus far, in school year twenty twenty, you'll see our fall numbers. And I did qualify that as being fall because we're going to see those numbers increase. In some of our, uh, mathematics courses, students still have till January to decide if they're going to turn that course and, uh, into a CSM dual enrollment course by setting the paperwork, writing the check, and then, of course, using the CSM final exam. Um, that would then, um, make that a dual enrollment course. We also see our spring enrollment, we tend to have, uh, a lot more students come on board in the spring, uh, in terms of taking dual enrollment courses. So that, uh, number will advance.
And for advanced placement, like dual enrollment, it is a special admissions program for high school students. There are prerequisites required at each high school in order to go into an advanced placement course. Um, it does give high school students the opportunity to earn college credit while satisfying their high school graduation requirements. And the students obviously would stay within their homeschool buildings to take the coursework, um, without the need to leave. The benefits for advanced placement?
Thank you.
Like dual enrollment, um, advanced placement courses do offer students the opportunity to engage in what a college experience would look like. In the spring, they will take and sit for their AP exam. And if they score three or higher, it does give colleges and universities the option to accept that score in place, um, of college credit coursework. And then, newer this year, so AP is the introduction of AP Classroom. It provides teachers and students a wealth of tailored instructional resources to each AP course. Um, and, you know, go, moving forward, looking at college transcripts, having AP coursework on your college transcript does definitely favorably impact college admissions. And enrollment numbers have increased over the past four years. Um, this year, we are at one thousand five hundred and sixty students taking AP coursework across our county. Um, you can see that there's been increase every year, there was a slight decrease between eighteen and nineteen. And we can attribute that to several factors, um, courses that were available, teachers that we had available to teach specific AP courses, school enrollment. And likewise, it could have been that students that year chose dual enrollment as an option over AP coursework. But i- if you look across the four years, we've definitely seen an increase. And then the costs, um, you know, as, um, Rhonda talked about, there is a reduced cost for dual enrollment, fifty-seven thirty-seven per credit. For our AP exams, they are ninety-four dollars per exam, so per course that a student is taking. And for both dual enrollment and AP, we do offer those at no cost to our farm students.
For college credit acceptance, we talked a little bit about that in both the slides for dual enrollment, just to, to re, re, um... just to to re- re-emphasize it because we did want this presentation to be a very much of a comparison because it is a student by student decision about which of these, um, are best for you. And for some students, it's a combination of both. Um, so for college credit accepting dual enrollment, um, college credit is awarded upon completion of the course with the passing grade. We talked a little bit about the passing grade, um, before we came into the presentation. Because a- as you know, a passing grade for a course in our high school classes is a D or higher, um, to get the credit. That is not necessarily true for CSM for all the classes. So it is program or course by course specific. Most of them are C or better to get the CSM credit for a dual enrollment class. But again, you'd have to look at this specific course to see, um, exactly what those requirements are to be a CSM credited course. And then for advanced placement, credit is awarded depending on your exam score. And as, um, Ms. Wazakinsky said before, that's up to the college to decide. Some colleges accept a three, some don't, some accept a four or a five or neither. So it's really important for you, um, if you are, if you have a student or you are a student, to make sure that you're kind of looking at the colleges or universities you're interested in or that next pathway to see what those requirements are for the courses that were offered. As far as location, again, touched upon those before, but when show comparison, for dual enrollment, they're offered at the CSM campus as well as on our high school campus. Not all courses are offered both places. Um, uh, but that definitely is something you could talk with a guidance counselor, um, at any high school and they'll be able to help students through that process. And then advanced placement is offered online at the high school campus. Very few are online, um, we're able to offer most of our, our AP, uh, courses on the campus. But occasionally, we do AP, um, online. And they're, they're pretty costly and most often, um, subsumed by the, the parents to do that because you have to have an AP certified teacher to be, um, teaching those classes even online.
With regard to, um, yeah. With regard to the benefits and experiences, if we did a little bit of a comparison, the first thing you need to know is that both dual enrollment and AP are college level coursework. Now, if you're looking at dual enrollment, if you have a student that's desiring to attend CSM after graduation or they're desiring to attend a university that accepts CSM credits, then they would most likely desire to enroll in a dual enrollment course. On the other hand, if you have a student that's planning to attend a university, a four-year university right out of high school, that is competitive in their admission process, that student may prefer to take an AP course. Uh, both dual enrollment and AP offer an easier curri- curriculum transition between high school and college coursework. And that can occur when the student is still at home, under the support of their parents, being able to turn to their college te- their high school teachers. So it kind of offers the opportunity to begin to branch out into the college coursework without actually being offsite on their own, doing the learning at that time.
And at CSM, right now, we have about fifty-eight courses in the following content areas. So as you can see, just about every content area is represented. And our AP courses at, in SMCPS, we do have thirty-two. Again, it's dependent on what each school is offering, but across the breadth of when we look at what we offer, there are thirty-two courses and in all content areas, including seminar and research. And do you guys have any questions or comments?
Yes, I do. So actually, I have done both dual enrollment for pre-calculus last year and I'm in AP classes. But I do know that, um, AP classes, they have a GPA boost. How does that compare to, uh, whether you go on campus at CSM to take the college classes or do dual enrollment?
It's the same.
Yeah.
It is the same.
So it does give you that GPA boost in the transcript.
So weighted, awaited GPA, it's on a five point as opposed to a four points.
We actually had this discussion because I also lead or co-lead with Dr. Jaffers the Program of Studies, which we'll be coming back to you in January with. Um, and we've decided as a committee to bring forth to you as one of the changes is that we are going to now label every dual enrollment class clearly in the Program of Studies because it is a little confusing, um, for that. So, uh, where it says, um, type, if you go into the Program of Studies now, it says type, it will say academic or type, it will say advanced placement. We're going to say next year, if it's a dual enrollment, it will be clearly marked there so you can see that.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh, when I was looking at things ahead of time, I saw, you know, it is quite a bit, a big drop from the previous years for the dual enrollment. And I know you went back to try to figure out why. Um, but do you find that the classes that are held at the high school for dual enrollment, that those are filled? Or do you find that more of the students are going on campus for, you know, going there? It just, it just seems like there's a big drop compared to the other years. Uh, the amount of students that are participating in the dual enrollment.
Are you talking for S, this, this current school year?
Yes.
The reason for that, that's just, the other school years, uh, represent total, uh, the entire school year.
Yeah, but this is, oh, okay.
That's just fall numbers.
Times two.
Okay, no, because it says two nineteen, two twenty, and I just, um, I just, but you have the total credit. I guess that's just for the fall then.
That's just fall. And it's, it's truly early fall because some of those courses, there'll be more students that are coming on board. So we have students that enroll in dual enrollment courses for fall, they'll enrolled in winter. They will enroll in spring, which is our h- largest number. And then they'll enroll through the summer. So usually I collect these, uh, this data, it's at, it's end of August, I'll get some total numbers.
I want to go back, I'm sorry.
Are you allowed to, are you, is the student able to take a summer course and have that count like towards their senior year? Or does it have to be during from September through June? So if, like, say a student is in eleventh grade and they're going into their senior year and they're like, hey, I want to get my English out of the way, can they take that year in the summer and have that, uh, be counted as their dual enrollment?
Can I answer that? Yes. Um, all of that is specified in the Program of Studies because there are certain courses that must be done in the schoolhouse and within the school year. And then some can be done in the summertime. There's an application process typically if students want to take summer courses, just so that we can look at them and work with them when the counselor is about making those decisions. So sometimes they can and sometimes they can't, so it's not, that, that, yeah. And I want to go back to the question about credit because Dr. Montgomery shared. Um, some dual enrollment courses that we teach in a schoolhouse do not, and most do not, have, um, a boost to your GPA or accredited. Um, and I'll give you an example and the reason, th- this is kind of the way you think about it. If we're offering it in a schoolhouse, for example, pre-calculus, it is a course that goes the entire year. If you would take that same course at CSM, it's a semesterized course. So that's why it has the bump up to the GPA or, and actually, um, you wouldn't take pre-cap for the most part, for the most part, at CSM, you would take it in the schoolhouse. But that's the difference, so it is course by course and you have to be careful of that.
But like English classes, so you can either take like, you can take AP English, your senior, junior, or you can go to CSM and take it on campus. Would that be the five point, five point O weighted GPA if you did the English class? Like, it depends on the class.
It depends on the class and we'd have to go there. I think, I believe, and I'm not sure, I have to go back to the Program of Studies to answer your question and always do that, I'm going to stress that. But if you're talking about ten-ten and ten-twenty, I believe it does because they're semesterized courses.
Uh, do you have any data, uh, for students, uh, taking AP courses? Does that enhance or help that person, uh, maybe get into school, his or her choice? Is there any data at all, I'm just curious?
Would you?
Of taking AP courses, does it, does it help in their resume?
Because you're addressing the question from the sense of, uh, the admission process, um, I'll, I'll take that one on. It depends, it really depends. It depends upon the university, it depends upon, um, the, if it is a, a university where there is, the admission process is competitive. Um, if it's in a state where they accept very few out-of-state students, if it's that you are applying to a university that has, you're applying to a particular program within the university that's competitive, then yes, an advanced placement course can be beneficial, um, on the transcript. Um, whether they would waive, uh, the credit is really dependent upon if the university is ac- accepting a particular score. Um, so yes, it can be, um, if the admission process is, um, highly competitive.
And I think that's where, sometimes we look at that exam score. I think that regardless on your transcript, the fact that you sat through and were successful in an AP class is going to give you the benefit over someone who did not sit and take that class. So regardless of exam score and acceptance, I think just having that on the transcript would definitely impact admissions.
But please also be aware that having a college course, which is dual enrollment at CSM, equally, uh, makes your transcript more competitive for the college application process.
I will tell you that I found for my son, even though he had done the dual enrollment, they didn't, they accepted the credit saying he did it, but they put, they might have put it towards a general, um, class. Like, any of them that were in his major, they just put as a general, uh, class. Like, the physics and the chemistry, he did get science credit and was away from that. But the other ones, you know, they said, yeah, we're going to accept it, but we're putting it as general. Or I guess that's what they call it, general.
It's a layup, thank you.
So while we're on the same thing, on the bullet where it says addition of college courses to the high school transcript if the course is a graduation requirement, what do you do with the class on the transcript if it's not a graduation requirement?
If you're taking a course at CSM and it doesn't fulfill a graduation requirement, it's not added to your high school transcript. It is a part of your college transcript, which is then requested as a part of the admission process. Uh, but it does not become a part of your high school transcript.
Which means it doesn't count toward your GPA?
Correct.
Right.
And then do you, do you do the partnership pair, uh, paying for it if it's not a high school required class or not?
We pay for, um, courses at CSM, they're on our acceptable list that may not necessarily, um, meet a graduation requirement. Um, there are some courses at CSM, uh, that could be a type of athletic course or it could be a type of art course that we're not necessarily, uh, going to pay for. Um, because it's, um, how do I say that?
Extracurricular, I guess.
It's, yes, it's more of an extracurricular endeavor upon the part of the student.
Like an elective type course.
Yes.
Okay, and then, um, we keep talking about, so the way I'm looking at this is there's two different, there's two different pieces of taking an AP class. Number one, you can take the AP class in order to have it on your high school transcript and enhance your GPA. But just because it's on there does not necessarily mean, it might help you get into a college, but the college that you're getting into might not necessarily accept that class based on the score that you've received on, on your AP exam. So, um, do we, is there, and I'm, I don't even know how you could possibly do this, but do you see a trend or do you have any data collection on students who have taken AP classes and what the rate is of those AP classes being accepted by their college or university of choice?
Wow. You'd have, yeah, I mean, you could, I mean, you could certainly go to the College Board website and, and search by institution to see which cla- which institutions and colleges take that.
But it also changes every year.
It absolutely does change every year.
So, I mean, so it's, I mean, it's, it's really just like rolling the dice because I could, I could pull up a list for, you know, Wake Forest as a junior and what they're going to accept will be completely different when I apply and attempt to get in, in, in two more years.
Correct.
So.
So I mean, yes, i- it's an investment that you're making for that exam fee if you sit for the exam, but it's also an investment in your future that, yes, this is going to ha- be a cost. Could they change the requirements by the time your son or daughter gets into college? Absolutely. But I think that when we look at AP, we ob- obviously, we want, we want students to get the college credit because that is a huge savings in the long run, but we also want to make sure that they're getting the experience. So you're absolutely right, that can change from year to year, it can change from college to college. They could decide that they want a three this year and a four next year. Um, so, you know, it's dependent on those colleges and institutions, um, so again.
So do we offer any, so for AP classes that we offer in our schools, do they match up with any dual enrollment classes at CSM? At the same time, like, so in instance, if I have, yes, so if I have an AP government class, right, that's offered in the high school, can I also take a government level class at CSM?
There are certain courses that you cannot take, as I said, with dual enrollment, if we offer them in the school, in the schoolhouse. I think government is one of those that's in the Program of Studies. But, um, our supervisors all the time are working with CSM states to cr- to cross-reference the, um, curricula. So for example, the other day, I asked, uh, Kevin Wright, who's the supervisor of social studies, to cross-reference the CSM world history classes with what our content is, and they don't match. So our, the world history class at CSM would not count as a graduation requirement for us because it doesn't meet the state requirements for the standards. So we have to do that with each class we look at.
So could you also do that and then alert, is that on the list? Like, you know, when you put your Program of Studies that, you know, you could dual enroll? Because what I, what I foresee happening is students looking at the list on CSM or whatever is, is out there, looking at what they need to, for graduation requirements, possibly taking that course and then realizing, once they're in the class and their schedule is set, that it doesn't match up.
The, the safety, the safety in that is that each course that a student wants to take in a dual enrollment has to be approved by their school counselor.
In advance.
And in advance.
And after the fact, you're on your own.
Yes, so, and we work very closely with Latasha Baker, who is our liaison at CSM. She handles all of our dual enrollment students. And she meets with us regularly, so she's very well informed of those courses that will go back as a graduation requ- uh, credit and those that are just being taken as the student is looking forward to, I'm going into education, therefore, I will begin to pick up some of these courses that I will need at, uh, CSM regardless. So there's a safety, um, piece in there, it's reviewed, it has to be review, uh, approved and signed off on. Now, students can take any course that they like at CSM.
Whatever they want.
You know, and encourage, you know, some parents encourage their students to enjoy that process. And they don't need our approval for that. What they need our approval for is those courses that will be coming back. Or that we will be paying for.
Okay, and then that responsibility, I'm assuming falls on the guidance counselor?
Yes.
To ensure that that happens.
The school sc- yes, the school counselor is the one that signs off.
Okay, and then my last question, they, you have the bulletin here about special admissions program or what the criteria are. I, I don't see a listing of what, what are the criteria in order for the students to be accepted into dual enrollment or AP?
Um, well, the criteria is they must be, and these are all listed in the Program of Studies. They must be of junior standing. They must have at least a two point five GPA and they must apply to CSM.
And what about for the AP classes?
Can I, can I just, there is one exception, that is, is pre-calculus because we have students who are not juniors that are taking the pre-calculus, uh, dual enrollment and we permit them to do that with a dual enrollment, so.
And for AP, the student must have taken pre-AP coursework prior to enrolling in an AP course and teacher recommendation.
And every single AP course that's in the Program of Studies lists the prerequisites for that specific course.
We have taken away a lot of those prerequisites because the College Board is going to very much the inclusive, um, for AP. So all, i- in the last few years, you probably remember, we've come to you and have removed those prerequisites. Um, so many of them, if they've been updated in the last few years, we don't have a prerequisite because that is the direction the College Board is going for equity and equality. And, and if students really want to in high school take an AP course, we generally allow them or do the guidance and guide students through that. Um, that's why we also have had a big emphasis on the PSAT and doing, uh, predictability of kids who may not typically, um, elect to go to AP courses. Hopefully with that PSAT, we have the understanding of which kids we should probably having these conversations with that might be first-time generalational AP test taker or, or course takers and having that conversation of, have you thought about AP? This would be a good starting point for you to have an AP course. So, um, although there are still some prerequisites and I didn't need to sell on, um, we have removed many of those um, in the last couple of years to be more inclusive.
The PAs, PSAT does give the student their AP potential score, which is what will lead in that conversation with the guidance counselor about, you know, students who typically would not have considered it in the past, looking at that PSAT, which is why PSAT is so important and that we get the students to understand the importance of the PSAT, that it's not just another test we want them to take, we want them to be in school, we want them to take advantage of that. We want them to take advantage of that so that they can look at their score and say, you know what? I can be successful in an AP course because that's the direction we want them, want to head. We want to give them that college experience and ultimately hopefully that college credit.
I'm just curious, uh, does anybody know the average GPA for the whole student enrollment? I'm just curious.
I don't think it's calculated that way.
It's not calculated.
I don't think we've ever, that's really interesting.
Yeah, I never thought, great question.
Yeah, I've never done that.
Where is Dr. Jaffers?
You don't have that number?
Start adding them all up.
Yeah.
Bye-bye. All right, Mary, Kathy, what do you guys have?
The AP courses and the dual enrollment are wonderful opportunities for our students. And I'm thinking, how well are our, especially free and reduced students are taking advantage of these opportunities? So my question to you is, do you have the breakdown of the total number of students from each high school who participate in dual enrollment and AP courses? And do you have this number broken down by free and reduced lunch?
I don't have that clue with me, but we can.
Because it's free for the students and, and I would like to know, based on the percentage of free and reduced lunches in each of our high schools, whatever that percentage is, what percentage of those students are taking advantage of this wonderful opportunity to take, to be dual enrolled or take AP courses when they are completely free? That's the question that I have. Maybe, do you have that answer? If not, you could bring that answer to the board at another time. But I want to know, are they taking advantage of this wonderful opportunity? And you mentioned first generation students. This is a no-brainer, this is a win-win situation. And that's the question that I would like to know. If the number's low, what are we doing to encourage them to take advantage of this program? How are we reaching them, how are we reaching the parents? And we might have to do non-traditional methods to reach those parents so that they will be aware of what opportunities are available right here for their student.
We do have the numbers for dual enrollment in terms broken down by high school. And we also have the numbers, I don't have the numbers for the percentage of free and reduced students by high school. I do have it by the system and so we can certainly get that information back to you.
We can definitely do a communication update for you all.
That would be great.
Thank you.
With respect to the AP classes, I will say just anecdotally, there's a benefit to me beyond, beyond getting credit for it. And that is that even if they have to take the class again, one, once they're in college, I know as happened to my daughter, she was successful in her college course because she had taken the AP course. So she didn't, she didn't test out and get credit for that at the college level. But she was familiar with all of the concepts, she was familiar with the information. So it wasn't like being hit with a fire hose and, you know, she really, it, it really was very beneficial to her. So I would say to students who are interested in taking it, a rigorous, rigorous class, there is great benefit in, in doing so because it prepares you well. I love the fact that you're going to make alterations to the Program of Studies to indicate which classes count for dual enrollment. I, I had someone come to me and tell me what they paid for dual enrollment classes. And I said, gosh, that, that sounds awfully expensive. I, I mean, your student is supposed to get a discount. So tell me how a student gets a discount.
Well, we can go back to the slide if you can, Roger, that shows how much per credit. The general educate, unless they're farms, if they're a farm student, they get that.
The person is not a farm student and they paid almost four hundred dollars for a four-credit course. And by my math, the class should have cost no more than two hundred and twenty-three dollars to that student. They've received an invoice from CSM for three classes. And I was just shocked at the amount of, of money that they've had to shell out.
I would, I can't really answer without looking at the invoice, but I wonder if they, where, that was inadvertently applied to their cost, admission to the pool, the library, that type of thing. So that's, that's something I would encourage those parents to take back to Latasha Baker.
At CSM.
And inquire as to what, where those costs came from.
Yeah, I, I was really quite surprised when she sent me the in, you know, a picture of the invoice. I was like, seriously?
It really should be fifty-seven, thirty-seven per credit.
And, and that's still pricey. I mean, you know, when you're in high school, I mean, that's still for four credits. I mean, that's over two hundred, but definitely not four hundred.
Do they invoice you before, during or after the class though?
I believe you have to pay before the class starts.
You do. And the, the invoice I have is for the spring semester, so.
The only thing I would say is that if it, if it went through us, it should have been reduced. If they went on their own, they went to CSM and they enrolled in coursework, they're going to pay full price for every single thing.
It says dual enrollment at the top of the invoice, so I will.
Encourage them to further, to explore further and give them the name Latasha Baker because she knows us best in terms of the dual enrollment world and she should be able to cite pretty quickly if something is off.
Thank you, I appreciate that. It, it just, I, I think it's a wonderful benefit. I just want to make sure that the information that students are getting is timely and that, especially it strikes me because they have to apply in the summer basically for, for fall classes, making sure that there's a guidance counselor available who can answer questions for them when they need them answered.
And they will, your, your, your school counselors will be talking to their students in January and they have the packets for the students, they are really advertising dual enrollment courses as well as AP courses because they begin that discussion by going over PSAT scores and then meeting with each student individually. So in January, in February, that information should be coming forth to students. There'll be information going home in the newsletters to parents. This week we have the parent night at CSM about the entire dual enrollment process. They'll do another in the spring. So you're going to begin to see quite a bit of that information coming forth. But I think that the best marketer of this type of information is now that it's been in the system, so to speak, is students are telling students. And so they kind of take the underlings and began to talk about the type of opportunities that are available.
Very good, thank you.
For the, for the parent information night, who's running that? Is that coming from CSM or is that?
CSM.
So who will be there from SMCPS?
I will be.
Okay, so are you part of the panel and part of the discussion?
I'm always a part of, they have a presentation and then I'm always a part. I stand up, I answer parent questions, I answer questions very much about the difference between dual enrollment and AP and what's best. And it will always come down to that individual discussion between the school counselor, the student and their parents.
Okay.
I have one question. Senate Bill seven forty, does it have to say the student must be sixteen years old?
I'm going to have to go back and read the language.
And the reason I ask that is because we have gifted and talented students who are younger than sixteen who would be able to do the rigor of, to be concurrently enrolled. And I would hate for them to miss the opportunity because they're not sixteen yet. Because all students are not the same and our students have varying abilities and some students, fifteen, may be able to be concurrently enrolled, so.
I believe Ms. Washington has more to do on the college end of what age they will accept a student. I do know for our exceptional students that Ms. Bach, uh, Bachner is always very, very supportive. We have had students that are actually.
In middle school.
In middle school take advantage of these courses and we work very carefully in overseeing their success. We would work very specifically with St. Mary's College because we've done that and also with CSM because when they're young like that, you, you know, there's a whole lot of hand-holding that goes on to ensure that they're remaining successful in that college campus as well as that we're supporting them in that process. So yes, they can take advantage, but it is that one-on-one.
Yes, so you do make exceptions to the rule that a student has to be sixteen years old if on an individual, one-by-one basis, that, because you say there are students in middle school who are taking college courses.
We have had one in the last year, but the problem is that they didn't talk to any of us prior to taking the course. So we have had since clarified that, had meetings with all involved because it's still really important for that social emotional piece when they're that young to, because the college didn't know that they were middle school students, we don't think. So, I mean, it's just a lot of things we would have wanted to give more support than we did. And so we're all clear now and we all learned lessons from that whole conversation. But again, middle school counselors, even though they're not really, as, definitely not as astute about all of this than the high school counselors are, they know enough definitely to outreach to us and call us if they have a student who's asking, or a parent of a student who's asking about doing some of these classes while they're still in middle school.
I, I, I'm more interested, I guess, in high school, you know, sixteen, if you have a late birthday.
There's no age requirement in the bill.
Oh, it's not, so the age requirement.
I'm reading it right now.
And it comes from the College of Southern Maryland.
So it comes from.
Right now.
College of Southern Maryland says you have to be sixteen.
Right. But there are exceptions to that, like pre-calculus.
And they do, and they do make, and they do make exceptions, but that's the col, keep in mind, it's a college. So the college doesn't want to have, you know, they do, they did have to choose an, an age. And they kind of predicated on being able to drive yourself, I think.
No, I mean, concurrently enrolled when the course is taught at our high school.
Oh, no, yeah, they can, yeah, you can, that's.
So what I'm saying is, they, the student may not be sixteen years old, fifteen years old, but in our.
I was fifteen when I did pre-calculus, so.
Yes, yeah.
See, so that's what I'm saying, how do we let people know that there could be an exception to the rule or something like that?
Well, courses like pre-calculus where you have a lot of fifteen-year-olds or maybe even younger, maybe. We, we actually talked to the whole class.
Right.
With pre, we don't pull out the kids who would just be sixteen. We, we talked to the whole pre-calculus class and offer them the dual enrollment opportunity when we have those discussions with them. So they are included, doesn't matter what their age, if they're sitting in that class or they're interested in being in that class, we offer the opportunity to all the kids.
Thank you.
That's all, okay.
And Tammy? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. I lost it. I think there's page one thousand and twenty on the bill. Okay, does anyone have anything else? Oh, sorry, we have Tammy, sorry, Tammy. You're right there above like the footer, so I missed you.
Send me the invoice. I meet with Maureen Murphy at noon today, so.
Financial report before you today is for the month of October. And the revenues received in October total ninety-one point seven million dollars, representing forty-one point seven percent of the budget. And on the expenditures side, we have encumbrances outstanding up one hundred and fifty-one point eight million dollars and the year-to-date encumbrances and expenses total two hundred point three million dollars, representing ninety point two percent of the budget. And there are no areas of concern. Are there any questions? Any questions?
No.
Any questions?
No.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone have anything else?
And we will adjourn at eleven fourteen, if it, we still have our work session.
Yes.